Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wareham School Committee to order. It is Thursday, March 20th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wickston. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I would like to start with a moment of silence for a Wareham educator who passed away this week. This is Mr. Jim McGuire. Taught for over 25 years at Wareham High School, a science teacher, biology teacher. He was active and helped out with the track program. And so we could just have a moment of silence in his memory, please. Thank you. We'll start first with our public participation. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address? Please come forward. Would you please just state your name and also sign your name on a piece of paper so that we can get that in our minutes, right in the middle of the table there? Thank you.
Sure. My name is Victoria Baltimore. I'm a current staff member at Wareham Elementary School as a para. There are so many things that I wish that the public would just know in general about paras and how much work we do and how much effort we put into these kids every single day to support teachers, to support the high-need students, lower-need students, and also just to make it public that we were not given nearly enough credit, whether it's pay. I have to work two jobs and I'm looking currently for a third because I don't make enough with just being a para alone. And it's not fair. It's not fair to the people I work with. It's not fair to myself. I can't leave my parents' house because I'm making such little. And then coming in front of everyone here where they're making nearly triple my wage currently, it's disheartening. So I speak for all the paras that I just had to sit in the most mind-bogglingly frustrating negotiations meeting in my life because we are worth far more than what we are paid, and it's not fair.
Thank you for sharing your opinion. And just here, where we do not comment on public participation. We take in the comments and it's duly recorded. So thank you for coming tonight. All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to the Cape Cod Collaborative Vote. And welcome, Hope Hanscom. Please come forward.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name's Hope Hanscom. I started at the Cape Cod Collaborative as the executive director on January 21st. And one of the first things I learned when I got there was that I was charged with opening our Articles of Agreement in order to bring Plymouth on board as a full member. What I didn't know was that this has been going on for a while, but the Articles of Agreement needed to be revised, sent to DESI, voted on twice by our board, and then agreed upon by all 19-member districts prior to April 1st. So I am on a wonderful tour getting to meet all of the districts of the collaborative. Unfortunately, it's all happening in March. So I'm here tonight to provide you with any information you're looking for and to answer any questions you have. Just in case this is a question, the substantive change tonight is just adding Plymouth. The last time the articles were opened was 2015. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that we also update any regulatory changes that have happened since the last time they were opened. And the only one for that is taking out adjunct membership as an option. Currently, we have that in our Articles, and I guess that's not allowed. But so it's really just the addition of Plymouth that is the primary component of the changes.
Does anyone have some questions? Joyce?
Hi, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So I did serve a couple of years on the board.
Thank you.
So it's nice to meet you here tonight. I just have a couple of quick questions. Why does Plymouth want to be a member of the collaborative?
So Plymouth has been participating in our programming for many years. And from what I understand, for the past four or five years, they've been paying the member rate for our Waypoint tuition slots. And I think it was a matter of they're using our services. They're also members of Pilgrim Area Collaborative. And by becoming members, they're paying in and having a say on the board of how the operations work at the collaborative. So I believe that is the impetus behind it.
Okay. And will it have any effect on the services or spots that are available to Wareham students?
That's a great question. I'm getting that everywhere, which I'm glad. I appreciate it. No, because they've been already participating in the slots, there aren't going to be fewer as a result of it. What I will say is that our ability to service Wareham students or any students at Waypoint in particular is really, right now, limited by staffing and by our structure of how we group kids. We have, the Director of Special Education is new as well. She and I are planning for next school year to change how we group kids so that we can actually take on kids who have the same disability but different presentations of that disability more effectively than we can right now. So I think actually it's going to be able to grow.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So you've had, the Board of your Directors, you said, has already voted twice on this?
They had a first read February 12th, and Brennan is on our board. I just didn't know that was you because I've never seen your face. Nice to see you face to face. And then they voted unanimously to approve the amended Articles on February 26th.
That was my question. So there's been no dissent on the part of your Board of Directors with respect to this?
On the part of the Board of Directors? Correct. It was a unanimous yes.
How do you calculate, determine the capacity of the collaborative?
Well, I'm two months in, so it's quickly, I'm trying to. But what we look at, I mean, there's no mathematical formula. I like numbers, so I wish that, I like numbers, Kristen.
Let me give you an example of what I mean. You have a finite number of classrooms, right? Is there regulations with regard to the number of children that can be in each classroom?
There are regulations around special education ratios, absolutely. We tend to be well-staffed, well beyond what the ratios are in DESI because the kids that we serve need, the DESI guidelines are for traditional schools and where kids' needs might be on a more moderate to mild level. The severity of the needs of many of our students requires that our threshold is much lower. So yes, there are regs, but we fall way within them.
So you determine your own ratios, is what I'm hearing?
We follow what the regs are and then make sure the needs of the students are met. And that's where, yes, it's our own.
Saying is they consistently result in lower ratios
Correct.
than the regs would dictate.
Absolutely, I would say that.
So how often do you actually turn away a student as a result of not having sufficient staff within your defined ratios?
Well, it's not within the defined ratios. It's within the current structure of the programs. And while, I would say at the STAR program, which is our program primarily for students with autism and medically fragile, it's more frequently a staffing issue where we just need more staff than we have. But I would say, right now, we're taking, we just took in a student. We have three that are on board to come on board. So we're not turning kids away right now at STAR. At Waypoint, it's actually about the grouping of students. So we had a referral, a student who has autism and probably is a good fit for Waypoint, but we don't, in the middle school, have a peer group that would be appropriate for him. That's what I was describing, that our agenda for next year is to make sure we group kids by need as opposed to just by grade level. So I know that's a long-winded answer. The answer is sometimes.
Well, let me get to the precise point I was trying to make, and that is, you theoretically have an opportunity now to say to Plymouth, "I'm sorry, we're not going to accept your membership because it will, by not having you in the group, it will decrease the likelihood of being able, of being forced to turn away students of existing members."
I hear you. Okay.
And that would seem to me to be a very legitimate thing for you to say. But it sounds like you're not planning to say that to Plymouth.
Well, I'm not saying anything. I'm the executive director who serves at the will of the Board.
I get that.
But I will say, because Plymouth has been participating at the member rate and with the member commitments for five years, even if...
What took them so long to ask for...
You can ask Mr. Hilton that, who was the executive director for 18 years before I got on.
I consider Paul Hilton a friend of mine.
Tell him I said hi. I can't answer that. My point is, no, it would not make us have more space for Wareham students to turn Plymouth's membership down because, right now, Plymouth is already in the mix on our percentages and how we plan.
But you can legitimately kick them out because they're not a member.
Once we take a student, the IEP process is clear that we cannot kick them out.
I understand you might not say that to an existing student, but you could say, "We can't take any new students."
Yes, we could.
But you're not saying you're going to do that.
No, we are not.
Okay. So if my wonderful, you know, Student Services Director back there reports to me that we've had a student turned away from the collaborative, then how should I feel?
It depends on why the student was turned away. And I'm not trying to talk around you. I mean, I'm a special ed director too. I was a special ed director for 15 years. So I understand that that is, that seems like a straight line, and maybe you can speak to this as well. It's not a straight line. So I think that's what you're trying to draw, but it really isn't about space. It's about appropriateness.
I get that. I really do. I understand the nuance.
Well, I feel like I'm just not hitting your point then, and I want to, so just help me.
Well, trust me, I believe you're trying very hard and eloquently to do precisely that. But I will, for the sake of time, say thank you very much for being here tonight.
The other thing is, please reach out to me at any point, h.hanscom.
No, I'll let Melissa do that. She's much smarter.
I don't know. I think you're both brilliant. But I am happy to have any conversation anytime, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do say hi to Paul.
Oh, well, you'll see him before I will.
Well, unfortunately, I don't see him all that often.
All right. If I hear from him, I will.
Okay.
So do I? I'm sorry, Brennan, go ahead.
Just to speak real quick, as someone who's been in the Board of Directors meetings, this is something that we have discussed as far as availability and everything like that. From what I understand, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but the collaborative is in no danger of having to turn away students. We've, they, I mean, if there was a huge influx, if, you know, there was 20 kids signed up, then that might be a concern, but, you know, aside from a major uptick, you know, suddenly, like I said, 10, 15 kids, we don't have to, they are more than capable of handling five, even five or 10 students would still...
Depending on the program.
Depending on the program, but generally speaking...
In the profile.
Yeah. Like you said, there are some exceptions where there's some students that we might not be able to serve, but it would not be because of the numbers or because of Plymouth South joining, you know, joining in. Trust me, this was discussed at length. Everyone's concern was right in line with your own, you know? Are we going to be shortchanging a Wareham student by doing this? And again, that's, from all the information we have, that's really not going to be an issue.
Good. Thank you.
See, he did better than that. You don't need me.
So I have a motion to adopt the amended Articles of Agreement.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Stained? 500. Thank you. Good luck on your turbo tour here.
And they're trying to get everybody. Once I saw your schedule, I was like, ooh.
You can just signature. That's fine. I'll write the printing. Sorry for the late evening time.
Do you still have to, like, cut and, literally cut and paste them all on the same page?
I do. I'm going to cut them with scissors and glue them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was nice to see you all. Thanks for giving me the time.
But anyway.
She's amazing, by the way, so please.
We are well aware.
We already knew that part.
Next up on the agenda is good news. Anyone want to share some good news? Joyce, then, Dr. DeAndrea.
Oh, sorry. You can go first.
You sure?
Go right ahead.
So I just wanted to say that it's exciting that the Wareham Middle School Chorus will be performing at the Providence Bruins on April 4th. So if you want to go down there and go to the game and enjoy the performance, you can do that.
That is very cool.
I also wanted to share a letter I received from the Wareham Redevelopment Authority. They sent me a letter, and they wanted to recognize and appreciate and commend the dedication and success of our DECA program and its advisor, Lisa Cunha, for their drive, discipline, and commitment that is evident in their impressive work that they're doing. They were very proud to read about the team that is going down to Orlando, Florida. They specifically wanted to recognize the President Charlotte Roy, Secretary Emma McWilliams, recognize that name, co-vice presidents for marketing, Lily Hagan and Evelyn Francis, school-based enterprise leaders, Priscilla Ross and Kaylee Rose. So congratulations to them. The WRA is watching, and they are very proud. And that letter came from Dan Butler, who is the chair of that committee. So thank you for, to him for sending that, and congratulations to our DECA team.
Thank you. Joyce?
I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of spending time on Friday morning at Credit for Life with Jeff and got to talk to a lot of students. It was really a lot of fun. Got to talk to Emma and Jacob. So they really, Cape Cod Five does a really great job with that, so very thankful to them for continuing that program. Looking forward to Career Day at the middle school. I got out of doing a presentation, but I'm looking forward to attending that. And tomorrow at the elementary school, they're having Crazy Sock Day in support of World Down Syndrome Day. So looking forward to that, too. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next up, we have our Student Representative Report. Emma?
Thank you. We have kind of a lot going on at the high school right now. First of all, spring sports just started this Monday. There's a lot of students that are participating, and there's been a lot of excitement. I've seen a lot of kids walking around with tennis rackets and all sorts of, like, sports equipment, so kids are really excited. Term three ends next Friday, and then we'll be entering the last term for the school year, which is crazy to be saying. And as the time for seniors to commit to colleges is kind of rolling around, there are Instagram posts being put out for college commitments. The class of 2025 is kind of working with, Ms. Dineen kind of took the lead on getting those posts put out. So it's really exciting to be able to have that kind of partnership, and it's really exciting to see the posts out for all the seniors. On Tuesday this week, Mr. Navarro held one of his successful astronomy nights. Students and community members are welcome to attend, and they were able to see the night sky and various components. You have to, I was there. I forgot which planet it is, but we saw a planet. I think it was Jupiter. I'm pretty sure it was Jupiter. It's very exciting. He has a great setup of telescopes, and if anyone can ever make it from the community in general to school, it's a really great time, and he does a great job with it. JR OTC cadets competed over the weekend. It was their first drill competition of the year. They showcased dedication, precision, and skills while competing. The Third Annual Student Staff Basketball Tournament also took place last week. Students and staff are teamed up to play against each other, and the rest of the school cheers them on in a pep rally kind of style event. In the end, the blue team won. I believe they got shirts for winning, and students had a great time watching the game per usual. And it's great to see teachers play, and it's just really nice to see the school kind of come together. Guidance also held their first annual scholarship fair recently, which allowed students to collect scholarship resources, papers to fill out. They could ask the Guidance Council's questions and just spend time working on scholarship applications. It was organized really well by the different requirements and super easy to take them and work on them. Ms. Giafrida, you guys heard from her about this a little while ago, but she had the marine biological laboratory trip last week, which was in Woods Hole. Students had a really good time. They analyzed their own bacteria and learned about science, marine science. I personally heard a lot of excitement about this trip. I know that there was a really good handful of students that got to go, so that was a big success. And as you kind of mentioned, Credit for Life took place last week. Students were working through a financial simulation based off a career of their choice. I personally had a great time there, and I think it was a great opportunity for kids. We visited the booths in the gym, made various financial decisions, and we were able to learn from experienced adults to kind of prepare ourselves for the real world. And finally, I know there's a lot on this list, DECA's annual dinner and auction is coming up this Sunday from 1:30 to 3:30. There's lots of great items that have been donated. A live gecko is included as one of the auction items from Mr. Bariol, so.
Of course, from Mr. Bariol.
But there's a lot of exciting things, TVs, scratch tickets. There's plenty of gift cards and a lot of big items, poker table, great stuff. They'll be auctioned off during the event, and dinner is provided by the high school's chef, Breda. Anyone interested in attending, tickets can be purchased from a DECA member. I have some on me if anyone liked them before I leave. And you can also purchase them at the door if you're interested in showing up. So that's all I have. I know it was a lot, but lots of exciting things.
Thank you. Joyce?
Just, you brought up the scholarship fair, which I saw pictures of it. It looked great. And then I took the opportunity at Credit for Life to ask all the students. Did I ask you?
Yeah, of course.
Have you applied for scholarships yet? Do you know how many scholarships are available at Wareham High School? They were pretty much sick of me by the end of the day. But that was really great. I just want to applaud the high school for doing that scholarship fair. Hopefully, it's something that'll continue. I know you told me that. It was really helpful.
Yeah, it was a great opportunity, and, you know, they call it the first annual, so I expect that we can see it in coming years. I think it was a great opportunity for students, so, yeah.
Okay.
Guidance is really great about helping students out in that way.
Great. Thank you. Oh, Brennan, go ahead.
I just have two questions. When the astronomy thing, you said it was open to the public. Where is it?
It's right in the parking lot of the high school. It's either on the softball field or in the parking lot, so right next to each other either way. But Ms. Navarro sets up telescopes right there, either on the grass or, like, on the parking lot, so.
And the DECA thing, how much are tickets?
It's $8 per ticket, and you just pick your meal as you buy it. There's two options, I believe it's some sort, it's a Mexican meal that's a little spicy, I believe, or lasagna and garlic bread. I'd have to look at the ticket to remember exactly, but, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Emma. Next up, we have two sets of minutes from January 30th and February 6th. Does anyone have any changes or edits, questions about the minutes?
Motion to accept the minute.
Thank you.
Second?
Motion first and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? 500. All right, now we have the Student Attending Report. Dr. DeAndrea?
Right, so included in your pack, and I think there was a revised version that you received today, slightly revised, not by much, of the Student Attending Report for your review. Jamie Wickston does a tremendous amount of work in putting this together, lots of numbers, lots of working with other districts to figure it all out. So that was for your review, and certainly if you have any questions or thoughts, we're happy to try to answer them for you.
Percentage-wise, how would you say this rates to maybe last year or the last couple of years in terms of percentages of students, not taking the Volk schools out of it?
Yeah. So it is a drop. It was a drop of about 19 students that are going to an out-of-district public school. Is that a trend? I hope so. We'll see next year. I know Mr. Swett likes a few years before he makes that declaration, but it is a drop. It was of about 19, so that's tacking in the right direction.
Well, there's another question. Do we still follow up with families to inquire why they are opting for some of these choices?
I have not this year. I have in the past. I certainly think it's a good idea, and yes, I most likely will send that out again this year just to...
Yeah, see if there's any new reasons or if it's just more of the same. It would be helpful, I think, for us to know that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I did that, it was either last year or the year before, and I'm happy to share that with you, or I could, you know, send it out again and then share both results. I think that would be good information.
I think it was the year before, right? It was when it was your first year?
I believe it was.
Other questions? Jeff, and then Brennan?
Go ahead, Brennan. Well, you said that there was, you said 19 students from previous that have come back?
Well, not necessarily. There are 19 less in our out-of-district choicing out to another public school. I haven't tracked exactly where those students went, but it is 19 less that are...
The only reason I was asking is, you know, if we're going to follow up with, you know, why the people who are out of district are staying out of district, we could also ask the people who are coming back, what was the biggest factor that made you decide to come back to Wareham? Because that would be something we could promote more, too.
Absolutely.
I mean, I look at the out-of-district public school as the biggest number that we should be focusing on because parochial schools, private schools, you know, tuition-based stuff, parents do that for millions of different, you know, status symbol, the thought that it's a better education or it's more prestigious on the college application or whatever. But the out-of-district public schools are the ones that I think that we absolutely need to focus on and, you know, really work to bring them back into the fold, as it were. I don't remember, what was the main reason given? I remember that we did this. I just don't remember, what was the biggest reason of why they chose out of?
I'd have to go back and look. I can't remember it off the top of my head.
Yeah, and my other question was, what he had asked earlier is, you know, did we follow up with them as to why? And get, you know, like that, you don't want to bug them, but I'd keep asking until we can really figure out, you know? Come on, please, come back. It cost us a lot of money. But I think that 19 people, one way or the other, like you said, hopefully it's a trend going in the right direction.
Jeff?
So first, I want to say, I know it's an extraordinary achievement to put this report together, so Jamie, thank you. I would ask you, how on earth do you manage to do it? But I think it would probably take you five minutes to actually say exactly how you have to, the efforts you have to make in order to do this. The, one of the reports has, at the very top, to me, which is, one of the things that's very enlightening about this, is this, this report basically says we're going to have a senior class of 77 students, which I think is probably the lowest it's ever been. Probably next year will be a little higher. It looks like it's going to be a little higher. But then it reconciles how we got to 77 from what it theoretically could be, which, based on where kids are going other places, we could have a class of 195, which is literally quite a bit more than double what the class we're actually going to have. And the biggest draw is vocational. That's not atypical. I think we've had a significant, this happens to be 56 kids at the Volk Tech, and they do a very nice job, and kids come out of there with very concrete skills, which allows them to go to work and be productive members of the community. It's the 31 that are being pulled into other districts. And the answer to your question, I think we, Brennan, I think we know the answer, which is people, there are a very small number of students who create, who have behavior issues which create the impression among other students and parents that, you know, other schools don't have these behavior problems so they can get a better education at a different school. I question for a variety of reasons whether that analysis is accurate, but it happens, and that's exactly what happens. And we know that kids can get a great education in Wareham Public Schools, and there's not much you can do, both legally and otherwise, about the behavior of a very small number percentage of our students because we take every student. The other significant thing about this report is that I've been around so long, I can remember when there were 3,500 students in Wareham Public Schools. What's interesting about that... What's interesting about that number is if you take, all the kids are going somewhere else. It's about, and I'm doing this from memory, but Jamie will correct me if she's so inclined, it's about 800 and some, 60, I think, students that are going somewhere else. And if you add that number to the 1,800 and some that are actually here, you get, you know, do the math, it's close to about, call it 2,700 students. Nowhere near the 3,500 students that used to exist in Wareham Public Schools. In fact, less than half of the way to the 3,500, which tells you a lot about the demographics of Wareham Public, of Wareham as a community. It is like the rest of Massachusetts, and statistically, like the rest of the United States, and a good part of Europe and Japan, we're just getting older, and kids are having fewer kids. In fact, the replacement number is, is close to two, and the average now for, for, for a, I guess, for the woman, is less, significantly less than two. So, we are in a graying society, and so we shouldn't, I guess the bottom line is, we shouldn't overreact to the fact that we have 77 students in our graduating class or 1,800 students, because more than half of the problem is literally the kids don't exist. It's not that they're going somewhere else. They literally don't exist. Nevertheless, we'd like to keep more of the students that do exist, and it's a shame that people are extrapolating the behavior of a very small number of kids into thinking that that's going to prevent a great education. I am one of the luckiest people in Wareham, because I get to interact with, and as of this moment, I have 17, probably going on 18 and maybe even 19 kids on the girls' tennis team, and they're all wonderful kids and wonderful students, and I'm privileged to be able to coach them in a wonderful sport. So, for any member of the public that's listening, you don't need to take your kids somewhere else to get a great education, and they're going to be surrounded by wonderful kids.
Amen. April?
So, just to add to that, not necessarily what Jeff had said about, you know, the numbers and the demographic being different, MASC's Division VII is actually putting on a roundtable for, you know, the Cape and I, our area, Carver, and some of the rural school districts on some of the other contributing factors to declining enrollment. So, if you guys look at, there should be information being sent out from MASC for anybody who'd be interested in paying attention to some of the speakers that they have for some of the other contributing factors to why we are losing students, some of it being housing-related, people having to leave where they're going, move in with family because the cost of living has become a challenge, and they have had to, you know, bunk in with family in other places, and kids have had to leave the district for those reasons as well, for affordable housing. So, it's not just that they think that they might be able to get, you know, a better, I don't, like Jeff said, you can get a great education at Wareham Public Schools, but I think we'd be foolish to consider that we're not going to lose some because of so many other economic factors at the moment.
Anyone else? Joyce?
I'll just say, like, I look at these numbers, we've been looking at these for years, right? And we know that between eighth and ninth grade is where, you know, especially to the vocational school, and we always talk about, you know, how we get the message out there to parents. And I just want to say, I know that the high school is doing a great job of getting the message out to parents. I guess I would just encourage parents, you know, to pay attention, to listen to what is offered at Wareham High School. And same, you know, going from fourth grade to fifth grade, there's a big jump. So, going from the elementary to the middle school, and I know that the middle school does a great job of getting that message out. So, I would just encourage parents to come to the school, to programs, listen to what the schools are putting out, instead of what other, what you hear on social media, or what you hear from other parents at the fields, or, you know, listen to what is really going on in the schools, and make an educated decision. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. And I think Scott's done some great stuff. I mean, I'm excited about...
I know they have.
You know, we've got American Sign Language coming in, we got the EMT course, we got the opportunities for, you know, for preschool instruction, and there's really lots of great stuff that's happening at the high school. And so, and we're going to make more of a concerted effort to really advertise that.
Well, I have seen some of that lately, and it's great. It's great, yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, we have two survey votes coming up. The first is the Genocide Education Evaluation Student Focus Groups Survey. Mr. Palladino, can you help explain this, please?
Sure. Thank you for having me, and thank you for promoting all the new programs at the high school. So, the, last year, we received a genocide grant for $28,000, and this was through DESI. And what it allowed us to do was to do a lot of curriculum work and to purchase some curriculum, and it also allowed for us to bring students to the Holocaust Museum. So, there was, it was a nice grant. That grant has expired, it was nonrenewable, and we're moving on. But one of the things they would like to see is what kind of impact it had on our instruction and our curriculum. They would like to have the opportunity to come back into a world history or US history class to conduct a survey with approximately eight to 12 students, and I would be there while the survey was conducted, obviously. And they have a few questions in regards to genocide and the instruction of genocide in their history classes, both this year and last year. And there's approximately 10 questions they would ask to this group, and this would not take a full period. This would be just a portion of a period. So, as they said in an email, this would be a low-burden activity for you. But they do want to validate the money that they have spent and the grant that we received. And so, I am asking for permission to administer this, and I will assure you that I will be there while it's being administered. And students would have to sign, have their parents sign permission slips to allow them to take the survey as well. This would not be a kind of reverse permission slip, if you will.
So, it would be opt-in, not...
Opt-in, correct.
Questions for Mr. Palladino. Brennan?
I read the survey questions and everything. I'm slightly concerned at what the goal is, is, I don't know, I got the impression that it was kind of aimed more towards seeing, you know, not so much the impact that it had on the students, but whether or not the level of education on it was up to par. I mean, I'm wondering if this is going to be kind of punitive, if this comes back as if we're not teaching enough about genocide at Wareham.
That's a great question, and maybe I should have elaborated that when the results come back, it's not going to be specific to any school or any class or any grade. So, I was assured, you know, it would be anonymous on that front.
Right, because that was kind of my concern is, you know, not that it's exactly a cheery subject, but I don't want it to be, you know, "Why isn't Wareham teaching enough about genocide?"
Right, right.
Joyce?
My only question is, when I saw that, I guess I thought it had more to do with the elective that you were offering, but no, this has to do with it...
Well, the grant actually had a lot to do with the elective. It really helped to build up the curriculum. But in regards to what they're trying to survey, their goal was that they really wanted to articulate this curriculum in history and in other content areas in the school. So, while the focus group, if you will, for the surveys will be a history class, a lot of material was attained for our genocide class through this grant. The timing was just, we had the class for one year, and then all of a sudden, the grant came up, and it was really a natural progression to be able to do a lot of curriculum work for that class through the grant.
So, have you run that class?
We have.
You have?
This is the second year we've run it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just suggest that before you hand anything out, if we vote for this, before you hand anything out to parents that either DESI or their contractor came up with, it's really poorly written.
Yeah.
There's, some of the sentences don't make sense, and I don't think that's the message we want to send parents, or DESI wants to send parents. I'm not saying this is Wareham.
We would create the permission form.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
And the inclination of what it is.
We would cut and paste and make sure it's grammatically correct.
Yeah, cut and paste.
Right, right, right. And again, that's if you vote for it.
Right.
You know, because Dr. DeAndrea asked me to make sure that it was not a requirement, and I want to be very explicit with this, it is not a requirement on the grant. If we say no, door's shut, and we move on. We don't owe them any money.
Okay.
So, it's really up to you.
Mr. Swett?
So, who would be actually, you would be physically there?
I would like to be there.
Who would be actually running the focus group?
So, there would be a representative from, I believe it's MC2, is...
What is that?
That's the group that they have, that they're using to gauge their...
Subcontractors from DESI?
From DESI, correct.
Okay.
And the history teacher, obviously, would be there as well.
Okay. Who actually taught the course that discussed genocide?
But remember, they're also, they're just using that one course, but they're talking about history in multiple years. They're not just asking about this year.
So, some of the questions that they're going to ask, "What have you learned about patterns or signs of genocide?" Talk about open-ended.
Right.
The whole section, the whole question five has five very provocative questions to ask students who are in ninth and 10th grade. I'll give people an example if you don't have it in front of you. Changes in your feelings about people who are different from you. That's a powerful question.
Agreed.
Especially in the current political environment. Changes in how you behave differently. Don't like the phrase, but putting that aside, I get what they're driving at.
Right.
Are you comfortable, and maybe Emma has a thought, even though she's two years older, than the people who are going to be confronted with these questions?
Right.
I mean, can you imagine being asked these questions, and how comfortable you would feel answering these questions?
I mean, I would imagine that the classes somewhat prepare you for it, but I don't have a full understanding of the program. But I understand what you're saying, and they do feel open-ended, which can definitely be difficult to answer at times. But, I mean, I assume the program kind of brought up these topics, is what it sounds like. So, it seems like they may have their thoughts about it. I don't think I have the best understanding of it to be able to back it up.
I think our kids will be able to answer the question. I think the point is, are they going to be comfortable answering some of these questions? And that's my point. Right. They'll be able to answer the questions.
There's so many questions, especially in the current state of the world, that people are uncomfortable answering. And if they're answering anonymously for data collection, I think that people would probably feel more inclined to answer honestly if they know that their name isn't specifically attached to it for information.
Well, I think it depends on the format it's asked in. Like, I mean, from the way I understood, it's going to be like, you know, we're all going to sit down at a table and, "So, Emma, how do you feel about genocide with everyone here watching? Your answer will be anonymous, but please answer in front of all of your friends and peers." That doesn't, I don't know, I think I would be a lot more nervous answering questions that way.
But I do think also, what I read, is that they're going to ask a question, and it's more of a discussion that's following. So, you either contribute or you don't, and you don't have to answer any question that you don't want to. Was, at least that's what they stated.
Right.
And I would think that the people that would opt into this, if they're, if they were uncomfortable, they'd opt out.
True.
So, I mean, I think you're only going to get people who are going to go home to their parents and say, "I, this is a survey, I'd like to participate in this conversation." And the parent will say, I'm sure at home, there could be a discussion or a conversation with the parent as to why they feel that they want to be a part of that conversation. And I would think that with a school that we were promoting so much of like AP and IB and that sort of like worldview thought process on education, and taking that whole approach to things, that this would be a huge benefit to any student that would participate in it. Because especially if you're trying to prepare a student for college, where they will have these kind of open discussions and look for differing opinions, I think it's beneficial to anyone that would participate in it, especially to gauge if the grant and what was being offered to us in terms of the curriculum that we were able to provide, if it was giving thought-provoking information from one view or another, because everyone's going to have a different way of looking at it. But to come at it in a collaborative way that would prepare them for how they're going to have discussions in some college settings, I think it would be hugely beneficial. So, I would vote yes for this.
I just want to ask, are they going to have the questions beforehand, or, I mean, that's, we have the benefit of knowing what's going to be asked, but if these students don't, and they're kind of put on the spot with it, I think that they might be a little bit more reluctant, even though they may want to give the information. I just think that if they don't have the questions beforehand, some of these might definitely catch them off guard.
I think to...
We're talking about ninth and 10th grade, right?
Right. But to make it valid, I don't, from my understanding, is they wouldn't give it to them ahead of time.
But I would think if the subject matter had been previously discussed, and they know what the topic, the overall sense of what genocide education is, I don't see that any of these questions, I wouldn't look at any of these as provocative, as more as I would look at them as like, is a different way to gauge, you know, was the curriculum, did they get out of it, whether positive or negative? You know, they might have a negative reaction to the question, and that information is just as valid as if they had a positive one.
And we may not, we may get, you know, three or four permission slips back, and they may say, "You know what? Thanks, but no thanks."
Yeah, you don't have enough kids to participate.
Right. They're not going to send someone down if we only have three or four students that the families have signed off on it.
What is your recommendation?
I was just going to ask that. Ask Jeff. That's why I raised my hand.
I feel a little obligated, because the grant has been beneficial to infuse genocide into the history and English curriculums. So, I feel like we took the money, and we utilized it, and we did get all the curriculum, not just being able to write curriculum, but some curriculum that we were able to infuse into the history class as well. I feel, again, a little obligated that we should support this and conduct the survey with permission slips coming back, with the principal being present, and the history teacher being present for the survey and for the focus group. And again, they're going to be taking data down from those surveys, from the conversations, and there's no name of school attributed to that. So, I would recommend we vote for it. But ultimately, it's up to you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I would just say, based on your recommendation, and with all those conditions...
Absolutely.
We'd leave it up to you to have those decisions made.
Absolutely.
All right, so, motion on the floor, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying?
I'm okay. Okay, but I'd like to be present, if that's possible.
Let's see if it's going to happen first before, but if it happens, you can be my guest, if it's okay with Dr. DeAndrea.
Yes.
All right. So, 5-0-0.
I'm for it, I just don't think that it's going to yield many results, but I'm not against them trying for it.
We've sent home a survey before and received one permission form back, so...
That's what I'm saying.
It could be a moot point, but I certainly wouldn't want to send out permission slips without your approval.
Go for it.
And don't send out the one they have.
No.
All right, thank you. We have another survey request. This is from a student in an AP class. Are you speaking to this?
I am.
Okay.
So, I get a lot of survey requests, as you can imagine, pretty much one every day. And it's amazing how many people want to do surveys. I try not to bring too many to you, but this one kind of piqued my interest for a number of different reasons, and the student was very persistent, and it's not a Wareham High School student.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
So, again, usually, I don't pay a lot of attention to those, but this survey was interesting, and what she was trying to accomplish was interesting to me. And her study is looking at all high schools in South Coast portion of Massachusetts, and she's looking to study advanced-level courses and how socioeconomic status could impact their ability to be involved in these, and she also ties in a little with the SAT. She is also looking to just survey one class, and we would also have permission forms for that one class. And some of the questions are looking at them, again, anonymously, no names, this is actually done through a Google form, no names, no emails collected, looking a little bit at demographic, and the first... Looking a little bit at demographic on the first couple of questions, and then talking about their academic success, the classes they've taken, and if money was a factor in them taking AP or IB courses, because there is a cost to the end-of-course exam that I know you're all familiar with. We do a great job here of making sure that that is not a hurdle. I know you've heard from me before, we are able to reduce the cost for the students here. And we also put a threshold on if they take more than three AP or IB courses, we don't charge them for the additional testing cost. Again, she has a question on SAT and ACT, a few questions, I should say. And then just asking about how the students have felt in regards to some additional services. And then there's an open-ended question, the last question, in regards to anything that they would like to add. So I would encourage us to accept this. I feel like the information she's going to gain is going to be helpful in moving forward with some of our advanced-level courses. As you can remember, we have increased our AP offerings for this year and are going to increase it even more next year with the phasing out of the IB. So I feel like certainly it's going to be valid information for us and obviously for the students. So I would ask that you approve, and it would be under the same format with, I would be present, and I would do the permission slips just like the genocide survey.
Any questions? Joyce?
So I am really uncomfortable criticizing the work of a student, so I know. But I just want to ask, like, some of the questions, "If money was not a factor, would you have taken more AP, IB classes in high school?" Do some of our students get their tests paid for in the poll?
So if a student has free lunch, they don't have to pay.
Right.
If a student has reduced lunch, they get a reduced fee, and then-
Excuse me, those things don't mean anything anymore.
There is a way with, Mike Russo is able to, I think it's called Direct Serve. He's able to get us the information on the students and whether they would be free or reduced.
Really?
It's, he's amazing. And so you're right, though. Everyone gets free lunch at the high, at the all schools. Before, we would get that through the demographic information. So we are able to get that.
And then the other question, "Have you ever felt at a disadvantage compared to other students due to private companies' intervention in your school?" I guess I don't understand what a private company would be.
Is that like SAT prep classes or additional tutoring?
SAT prep classes, when we had them, were run by Wareham High School. They weren't run by a private company.
That might be for us, but other, you said this is going out to all the South Coast schools?
Yeah. So we, at one point, we had different companies that ran the course. Well, it was online, like, you know, you think of like Kaplan.
Right. But this question says, "Such as riding the bus to school." So maybe some districts have-
Charge money.
And have outside companies where we don't, school lunches, courses. I guess I just feel like several of these questions aren't relevant to us.
This one, I think, is looking at this, different schools privatize their lunches. Different schools have bus companies that do the buses, and they charge fees. And so I think, I think that's what she's trying to get at here.
Okay.
Jeff?
The term "private companies" is ambiguous. I think in this survey, she's viewing AP, IB, SAT, ACT. Those are, in fact, technically, private companies.
I think she would have put that in the parentheses if that's what she was getting at.
Okay. But if something, if there's a fee associated, forget what we do.
Right.
But if there's a fee associated with taking the SAT or the ACT, if there's a fee associated with taking an AP course, et cetera, then, and that fee is going to another entity, which is not a governmental entity.
Right.
That's a private company. Might be a not-for-profit, but it might not be a not-for-profit. So I think that term "private companies" is A, incredibly broad, and B, easily misunderstood. Because I suspect that if you asked Emma, for example, before this conversation-
Maybe, it may be happening in Emma's class, by the way.
Right. She would not have associated AP as being a private company. It would have just been a label attached to a course. And they're not, they're not a private company like Google or-
It's College Board, right?
Right, exactly. It's College Board. So I think the question itself, I think Joyce, as usual, has made a good point. Some of these questions are, could be better written. And I know it's a student who's doing this, and I'm not going to vote against it, although I'm not exactly sure. The only reason this has value to me is because she's going well beyond Wareham in terms of collecting the data.
Right.
And so we may actually find that our student responses are somewhat constructive and favorable to us because of the way we handle these issues as compared to other communities.
She was very impressed when she spoke with the assistant principal and myself in what we provide for our students.
Exactly.
Compared to what she gets. But I think this would also validate some of the things we're doing. And just because she has administered it to other schools, I don't think she'd be inclined to change the questions at this point. I think we might be the last school that she administers.
You're going to get the results?
I will get the results, yes. I wouldn't do this if I wasn't getting the results. I, yes, she will be sharing the results. And again, I'm looking forward to that because every school handles these things differently, and I'm definitely interested in seeing how our students respond.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, staying 5-0 is there?
Thank you very much. And I know she thanks you as well.
All right. Next up, we have the Student Services Report. Ms. Fay?
Don't take offense, Melissa.
No, I know. I know she has to leave. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to start out with just a couple of numbers, just kind of update you on where we're at with special ed and also just kind of student services in general. So right now, our IEP numbers for active IEPs in the district are 593, which puts us at 31, I think, .4. 31.4% of our students are on active IEPs in the district. To break that down, it's 277 at the elementary school, 121 at the middle school, 173 at the high school, and then the co-op has 22 IEPs. 504s, we have a total of 156 in the district. That's 50 at the elementary level, 36 at the middle school, 66 at the high school, and 4 at the co-op. Right now, out of district, we have 52 students. Some of them still awaiting placement, but in the process of being placed. And that breaks down to, I wrote it down, and I don't know where I wrote it down. So here we go. Sorry, 53. Four of those are residential students. 49 of those are in private day programs and public day programs, which are like the collaboratives. Just to give you kind of a breakdown of that. I know that there were some questions about the new IEP, so I've kind of put together just a little bit of information about the new IEP. In 2019 and 2020, Kathy Bulia, who is our out-of-district coordinator, and myself participated in the IEP Improvement Project, which kicked off in 19, I'm sorry, 2019. And the new IEP was released by DESI in April of 2023 with the expectation that all school districts would have it rolled out fully by the 24, 25 school year. The department did provide funding through the fiscal, in fiscal year '24 and '25, through Fund Code 274, for funds in order to implement this. We did get that grant both years. It's an entitlement grant. And we wrote it the first year for, to train four coaches, two at the elementary level, one at the middle school, and one at the high school, to get intensive training to be able to then become trainers for our teachers and our parents. And they did provide a variety of trainings for our teachers. And then we also brought in Alan Bloom and his company to do trainings for our parents through CPAC and also trainings for our teachers. And we continue to maintain a subscription through Alan Bloom's program for our teachers to be able to access support for the new IEP throughout the school year. And I will, I hope to be able to have the funding and grant to be able to continue that into the next year as well. We did write the 274 grant for this fiscal year, which is actually fiscal year '25. So it's good now until September 30th of this year. That's going to be focused on more training and individual work with parents to get them more familiar with, parents and guardians, to get them more familiar with the process, more familiar with the new forms, which are very different from the old forms and a little confusing. So our team chairs are really taking the time to sit with parents, sometimes individually, sometimes in groups, to be able to discuss every page, go over every individual part of the IEP and make sure that parents understand it and are fully engaged in the process with their students. And this year, we're also adding another added support of an engagement specialist along with the new IEP Engagement Coach that is also funded through this grant, to be somebody to help reengage students in school who may be thinking of dropping out or might not be successful in the IEP program or their parents aren't fully participating or understanding the IEP process, to be able to help engage those, or reengage those students in schools. So that's where we are with that. And I don't know if anybody has questions because I know that that was something that people wanted me to talk about. So I'll pause if anybody wants to.
Any questions on the new IEP part of the presentation?
I know, Joyce, I think you came to one of them, didn't you, one of the presentations?
I came to one of the Zoom meetings, yeah. I'm saying no, like, I'm feeling a little overwhelmed with all the information. I think we talked before about if you could send this to us ahead of time so that we can have questions. Like, I'm just trying to take in everything that you're saying. It's a lot of information, and I appreciate that. But in the future, if you could send it to us ahead of time, I would so appreciate that. But yes, I did come to one of your Zoom meetings, and you talked about another training that you just did. Do you ever do them in person, or are they always on Zoom? I know in-person is hard.
Yeah. We actually get, we actually did a survey recently with the state, all the directors, gathering data from how our attendance for our IEP meetings and meetings that we have for trainings for parents, how it has increased or been impacted by offering, continuing to offer virtual after COVID. And we do find that still about 80% of our parents prefer to attend things virtually for a variety of reasons. Parents offered reasons in surveys about childcare, transportation, having to take time off of work to be able to, you know, they might have to take a half a day to drive, participate in the meeting, drive back to work.
Well, that would be like for an IEP meeting, but not for like a training.
Right. And the trainings, it's the same, the same thing. People cite that it's easier for them to be able to participate virtually because of childcare, because of work schedules, because of transportation. So we do continue, and we do offer, we have parents that come in and meet. We'll schedule individual meetings with the team chairs to sit down and go over the new IEP so that they understand it. But parents really have preferred to do that virtually. We do offer both choices, though.
And the Zoom that I attended, it was very interesting. And it's just unfortunate that there weren't other people there to take that in.
We're trying to really spread the word more effectively. We had an event that was happening kind of concurrently toward the school committee meeting tonight, which was the Federation for Children put on a presentation about transition for the older students. I have not been able to touch base clearly because I went from negotiations to here with the CPAC president, with Jesse Clements, so I don't know how that was attended. But I will get that information to you for next time, but I'm hoping.
So that was also virtual, because everything is virtual.
Yeah. The Federation does all of their presentations now virtually.
Oh, okay.
They don't offer the in-person. Unless you have like a big group that you can guarantee that there's going to be like 100 people there, and you would have to partner with other districts for that.
Well, those were the days. Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
So I know how Circuit Breaker works. How does IDEA work with respect to funding for local school districts?
They go by percentage, sorry, they go by percentage of how many students you have in the district. And they, and I don't know exactly, and Kristin might be able to answer that better than I can. But it depends on the size of the district and the percentage of special education students and the need in your district is how they calculate how much money you are entitled to. And then we have to write the grant to the specifications of the RFP to be able to get approved for it.
So it's an annual RFP?
Annually, we have to, yes.
And, and you know ahead of time, the criteria is the percentage of your students with an IEP?
And whatever funding the state happens to have that year.
Okay, but, and that's, so you anticipated my question. So IDEA is technically federal, but it's administered by the state?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And how, how much does that actual, in absolute dollars, how much does it generate for the district?
In the eight years that I've been here, I have seen it go be anywhere from 590,000 to close to 800,000. They do another release of any extra funds that they have, usually around February, March. We haven't seen that come out yet. It's usually not a ton. In the scheme of things, it might be $10,000 or $5,000 that we can then utilize to support other needs. But last year, I think we were at 700 and change.
701.
Yeah, 700, yeah. And that's just the 240 grant. There's also the 262 grant, which is the preschool grant that has never been over $20,000 the entire time that I've worked.
And it, and it supplements the operating, the LEA?
Mm-hmm, correct.
It is, it is not, you don't, you don't have to have additional expenses to get the money. You just have to have the students with needs.
Correct.
Okay. Because the, the Federal Department of Education could effectively disappear, and the IDA, as well as Title I, but I'm just focusing on IDA at the moment, could become block grants to states.
Yes.
But in the, what I think I hear you saying is, in terms of it, if it became a block grant, it really might, that might be invisible to the local district because the local, because the state is already has this money that they're getting. Now, is there any state appropriation for IDEA? Or is it all directly from federal monies?
I would say that the entitlement grants are all federal, but managed by the state.
But managed?
Yes.
But the amount of money is not coming from the state of Massachusetts, it's simply being managed. Then, of course, they take their slice for managing it. But the bottom line is, so if they turned it into a block grant, we might not even feel that, except to the extent that it became less. And that's, that's a complete unknown.
Mm-hmm, correct. It's a very disturbing complete unknown.
Yeah, it is a very disturbing complete unknown. So it's anywhere from $5,000 to $800,000 a year, and that's directly tied to the percentage of kids that have active IEPs?
Mm-hmm, size of your district and the amount of students that you have on active IEPs.
When you say size of the district-
Total enrollment.
So how does that play into the formula? In other words, is it, is it, I have 31%?
That's what it is. It's a percentage.
Okay. So if it's 31% of a district of 5,000 versus a district of 2,000, it's still 31%. But the number of students that that 31% adds up to matters. Okay. Kristin, am I missing anything in this?
You know, I'm not sure, since it's an entitlement grant, you just get the amount in, in the summertime, and that's what you have to work with. So I think we just never, I never have looked into how it comes to be a number that we get. We just, it is what it is.
But what we do know is, while it's not appropriate, appropriated at the state level, it is annually appropriated at the federal level.
Correct.
And that's also part of the scary part of this process.
It sure is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions on that?
I just have one question before going forward. So obviously, we have a lot of students on IEPs, and they purpose to provide supports, but also, I think, eventually to teach self-advocacy of the student and an understanding of their disability. With that in mind, how many students per year actually come off IEPs? Like, from a transition year, for, say, maybe seven to eight, or eight to nine? Do we get students that come off IEPs? Or how, like, what percentage is once they're on, they're on for the duration of their?
So we do. And, and- So we do and, and that's a very individualized question and it's very tough to kind of find a trend in it because so many factors go into it, right? So there's the eligibility process, which is dictated by the law. And it's the amount of resources and tools that we're able to give students because we're not curing a disability. We're giving them the tools to be able to access curriculum and the life of the school, right? So that's different for every student. So there may be years when we have 15, 20 that come off and then there might be years that we have none. And it's just really, you know, the student, the individual students that we have in front of me, of us, what their needs are and how we support them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But yes, I just have one more thing if I could just quickly. This year I just want to let you guys know that we trialed a new Special Olympics team. So we did a strength and conditioning team that was run by Mary Beth Kiernan and Erin Worlitzer as a coach and assistant coach. Scott Palladino gave permission for them to trial this program and the space and the ability to get this done. It was all done fully volunteer. The students participated, the participation was very high. We had paraprofessionals who offered up their time for free to work with our students who might need a little bit of extra support in participating in that program. The success of it made us want to continue, so we have applied to Special Olympics for a grant that they have to start a new Special Olympics program. So it would be in addition to our track and field and our basketball, we would have a strength and conditioning team. And through that grant, they would pay for the first two years of funding, so they would pay for our coach and our assistant coach and any other costs or expenses that we may have. It's a good investment for us because we really don't have to pay for a lot of travel for strength and conditioning because it's really just happening within the school, within, you know, within our property. But it is, we have seen an increase in students' ability to be able to participate more fully in basketball as a result of participating in strength and conditioning. So we're really excited about that. And the plan would be to continue the sport on and then add it to our athletic budget in the years to come.
How much?
It's not, it's I think 5,000 a year or something. It's, I don't know, Scott's still here or no, he left. I think it's about 5,000 for like supplies and the coaches' salaries.
And it's working, which is even nice.
Yeah.
I saw them, they're so excited.
Yeah. It's, it's really working out well and it's amazing how far they've come by participating in strength and conditioning. It really is nice to see.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the report from the Director of Finance, Kristin?
Good evening. In your packet you have the monthly financial report for the month of February. As of the end of February, we had expended approximately 59% of the budget. So a lot of the things that we're doing now is just reviewing the budget line items to make sure that, you know, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, that they are appropriately budgeted. So right now the principals are reviewing their line items and taking a look at, you know, where we may have some surplus funds or need some, to put some funds into. As always, we never have enough money in our transportation contract services, so you'll see that in a budget transfer a little bit later on. We're struggling a little bit still with home tutoring and I anticipate a budget transfer coming up for that before we end of the year. We're also looking at all of our open POs. I've asked the departments to look at their open POs the past few months to make sure that, you know, we don't have too much tied up in those POs that's realistic for the end of the year, that we're not, you know, over encumbering. So that might be, the, a good example would be the high school would have an open PO with, you know, a, a food service supply place for their culinary department. So that way they can just go and get what they need and have that open PO. Or we may have some at the hardware store so that when the custodians and the maintenance workers are working on a job and need something, they can just get what they need, you know, within, within reason and be able to purchase that. So we're taking a look at that. I don't anticipate any issues. We've been looking at salaries, looking at where we have some, you know, where we need to project out the salaries for the end of the year, making sure that those are fully funded. There may be some transfers with substitutes, we're looking at that right now a little bit more closely. But all in all, you know, I think the budget is, we're, we're in good shape with it.
Any questions? Yep, go ahead.
How are you feeling about utilities?
Well, I took a look at those over the past couple of weeks and they are, we are the project, that, the bookkeeper in, in the business office that does that, she did a great job at, you know, you know, looking at and predicting it out. So there were a little bit of changes. You know, we may have overfunded the elementary school because as you know, the past few years it just seemed we couldn't get, you know, a real good handle on it, but we seem to have done that and we actually have to, some funds with that that we may be transferring over to the high school because that was an area that we had, you know, had excess funds in the past few years. So we've, I've cut back, cut back, cut back. So I may have to do a little bit of a balancing act toward the end of the year. But right now the utilities, you know, they're, they're, they're in good shape. And those are also offset with money from the food service department. So every month there's an offset from the food service department. So that makes it a little bit trickier because at the beginning of the year it was, you know, harder to really tell because it's a monthly, it's a monthly credit to that account. So, you know, at the beginning of the year it may have looked like we didn't have enough, but as the months have gone on and we've replenished it, it, it equals out. So the utilities are, you know, they're, they're in good shape as well.
Yeah, I looked at substitutes too and it looks like you could have some problems by the end of the year.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Joyce?
Well, first of all, did you get, are you getting $50 back from Eversource on all the electric bills, you know, like we all are?
I know, I know. I had a chuckle when I saw that. And I mean, it's, it's, you know, in, in our own homes, $50.
Well, for me, yeah.
Too much of a dent and so even here.
Excuse me, I didn't get $50.
No? Well, check your email. The out-of-district transportation providers, when you look at the warrant, I just, I always look there because I know.
Yes.
And it just seems like the providers change. Is that because people drop off or because you find better providers or why is that?
We have a lot of providers. We have several different vendors, which is a change from, from the past. And I think that has sprung from COVID. There's a lot of people operating school transportation services. And we have a lot more coming in. So it may also be the timing of the bills. So you'll see in this week's warrant, we had, we paid a lot of transportation bills the end of the month, it'll hit. So, you know, and it could be some students coming in and out, the, the ones that are more of all, changing are, are out of just the homeless and foster students. The special education students, we don't really change their providers unless, you know, there is a real, if there's an issue of the provider can no longer do it or if there's a, you know, a different, a different need that we need to put that back out for quote. But there's really, there's really no reason why we don't change it unless there's a specific, specific reason.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have a transfer, is that correct?
Yes, yes. So I am in, speaking of out-of-district transportation, we need to do a transfer for, for some students. And, and what's tough is, and if Melissa's still here, she'll know, oftentimes we do not get any advance notice of some of the McKinney-Vento homeless students. So we'll either get it that day and say, hey, you know, we have a cost share and this student needs, needs a ride right away. And Marie does a real good job about scrambling and, and finding a vendor. Sometimes we don't know about it until we get an invoice and we have to track it down with the other department. So it's not something that we can really predict ahead of time. So right now we have one other, a new, a new homeless student that we are sharing and, and also a school choice student that is school choice to a neighboring district that require specialized transportation. So these are things, you know, that we just can't predict, but, you know, we, we do our best to, to provide that service as quickly as possible to keep the students in school. So right now I'm, I'm asking for a total of 35,000 and the transfer is coming from transportation salaries. Throughout the year we've had very, several positions for bus drivers and monitors open. So that has helped us shift those funds from driving salaries to the contracts. So right now I think we still have one bus driver position and two monitor positions that are open. And throughout the year we've had several other driver and a couple of monitors, so that has provided some savings. So in that respect, that has been fortunate for this.
Motion to accept?
Jeff has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Good question. So a child student with an IEP does school choice to another district. The responsibility for transportation stays with us?
Correct. Only if they have, only if they have specialized transportation in, so a, a.
An example of specialized transportation would be what?
They may require their own vehicle, they may require, they may require assistance, they may require a smaller vehicle, a wheelchair, any, any number of things. Why a student would not, it wouldn't be appropriate for the student to ride the, the regular yellow bus.
So once they get to the school, the responsibility to educate them is completely with the school choice recipient, but the responsibility to get the student there remains ours if it requires some kind of special?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we do have a few of those cases.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we had a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you, Kristin. All right, report of the superintendent.
Okay. I have, oh, first of all, we have some bill and payroll warrants that I ask in the superintendent's newsletter that you approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay, we have some gifts that I'm going to ask for your approval. Would you like me to, there's actually a couple of additional ones, Mr. Chairman. Do, I'm going to go through all of them first and we'll just do it as a.
Yeah, we'll just list them out.
Okay. So there's $3,000 from Atlantic Subaru for their Adopt a Classroom program at Wareham Middle School. They, they provided this to us last year also and so they have said they'd like to provide us with this, with this gift again for the '25-'26 school year. It's $3,000 that goes to, I believe it's five or six teachers that Tracy selects randomly to receive it. So that's very nice and they can use it for supplies for their classroom. We also have been selected to receive six Supply a Teacher kits. This is from the Kids in Need Foundation, which partners with the Burger King Foundation. And so that also would be for the '25-'26 school year. The Cyppecan Coral Society would like to gift $250 to the elementary school music department. We also have from Cape Cod Five, $100 to go to Brienne Tierney, Tierney's classroom for classroom supplies. And finally, $1,000 that came from Cape Cod, Cape Cod Five, made toward the school's annual Credit for Life Fair that just happened. So very generous gifts, great stuff that, that goes to our teachers that they can use for supplies for their classrooms and their programs. And I ask that you approve or accept these gifts.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you to all those groups, appreciate it.
Thank you. And as I, I mentioned at the last meeting, the town is able to give us a little bit more towards our FY '26 budget, $159,514 increase. So that would increase the total budget for FY '26 to $36,89,501. That is a, it goes from a 3.75% increase to a 4.2% increase. Thank you to the town. That, that's great and helpful. Unfortunately, it still leaves us about $500,000 to $600,000 short depending on how things come in. But of course, we very much appreciate any additional monies that can come our way and help us with the FY '26 budget. So I ask that you revote that final number. Again, it would be $36,89,501.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have to vote the net and non-net?
Not, not tonight.
No.
Do not have to do that.
Okay, okay.
So we had a motion first and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstain will be me for conflict of interest purposes. So 4-0-1.
Do we need another meeting of the Budget Subcommittee?
We do not.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Next up is the school committee news and first we'll start with the policy review.
So we had our final meeting of the Policy Review Subcommittee. And so in your packet there were some changes. The first one on curriculum adoption, everything that you see highlighted in yellow was updated. I believe the language in this first paragraph was amended to mirror other terminology about the same, the same topic so that it was uniform throughout all of the policies in the district. So it was just adding language to make everything, if I'm remembering correctly, Jamie, to make the language consistent throughout everything else in the district. So other than that, there were no changes to this policy, so I would entertain a motion to approve this policy as amended.
Sorry, which policy is this?
Curriculum adoption.
Okay, so I had a, a reaction to the highlighted area. Why is it necessary to have the free of simplistic or demeaning generalization?
Again, it was just to keep the language consistent throughout everything else in the district and I know that Melissa was involved in this.
So this is legalese.
Yeah, well, what it was is we were cited by the Department of Ed on, through civil rights, I think it was.
I'm not saying we shouldn't have the rest of it. We shouldn't be doing things on the basis of race, et cetera, et cetera. But simplistic and demeaning generalization, that's quite a phrase.
The language was literally like plucked and given.
It was given to us by the Department of Ed.
Once again, policy that's written for us and we better accept them or else we'll get cited. Never mind, go ahead.
So a motion, if I could entertain a motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Under protest, but yes.
The second, the next policy is our policy on guest speakers and there were no changes made to this policy, so just a motion to accept as is.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay, against, no, abstain, no, 5-0-0. Thank you.
So the next policy is the home and hospital instruction policy. Again, there were no suggested changes. And again, we went through all of this with Dr. Deandrea and the principals that were present, so there were no amendments to this policy. And Matt did check that any policy that we have that does reference any MGL or code were up to date, so they are all current. So again, if, a motion to accept this as, as is.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0.
So the next policy would be the replacing our current educational services to students identified as homeless or unaccompanied youth policy. So we would be replacing this policy with the policy that is highlighted in yellow as the homeless students enrollment rights and services policy. So most of the things, again, this would be in regards to our homeless and foster and the McKinney-Vento policies. So this would replace, the last time this was amended was in 2019 and the new policy would supersede this one.
And this is just taking the MASC language?
Yeah, this is the MASC language and recommendation, correct.
Joyce?
Can you just tell us, April, what the difference is between the old policy and the new policy? Like what is the?
Well, it's a lot, honestly. So we just literally took the recommendation from MASC and took our existing policy, which most of the things were mentioned in various spots, and just replaced the entire policy. So it is quite lengthy. So it went from like, sort of like a one-page policy to a much more in-depth policy on any sort of dispute resolution, the student's ability and right to remain in their school of origin, what a homeless student or a foster student is designed, defined as, and also that there will be a district liaison for homeless students and their families. And then links to the Department of Ed's McKinny-Vento policies as well, all linked in. And so it's kind of like a more. Yeah, more comprehensive.
That's what I'm asking you because I didn't read it.
It's a much more comprehensive, like some of this was just like unaccompanied youth. And this is much more in-depth on how to define our homeless and foster students in the best ways that we, by law, are serving them, according to DUCI. So just a motion to replace the existing policy with the new policy as included in your packet.
So. Suspend and adopt.
Okay, so the terminology, all right. So a motion to suspend the existing policy and adopt the replacement policy.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the final policy was the community use of school vehicles. And again, this was looked over by the superintendent, and there were no recommended changes. So again, I would entertain a motion to accept as is.
How often does that happen?
It doesn't happen often, but it does happen, I think, one time this year. I think it might be the only time in my, my tenure here that it's happened. But we had the, it was the Wareham Tigers cheerleaders were going to Florida, and we took them up to the airport.
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't happen much.
Okay, thanks.
So yeah, so those are the only policies. And again, I'd like to thank the Policy Review Committee for their time and dedication to reviewing everything this year. And a special thanks to Jamie for making sure that I had my act together in running these meetings, so.
Did we vote on this last one yet?
I believe we did.
No, we didn't.
No, okay.
So do we have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks. Okay, next up, we have the Superintendent Evaluation Timeline. And I asked the Evaluation Subcommittee to get together recently, and maybe they could report out to the committee in terms of what we're thinking of, what they were recommending for the Superintendent's Evaluation Timeline?
I'm not sure we talked about specific times, but we talked about the fact that this would be a two-year evaluation, which I believe we spoke about at the last evaluation, if I'm not mistaken. So there would not be a formal evaluation.
So, so on May 1st, when we are scheduled to do a superintendent evaluation, that would really be a glorified mid-cycle review.
Right.
Exactly.
And a chance maybe to review, maybe review common indicators, which we haven't identified yet, I don't believe, for this set of goals, potentially focus indicators?
Right.
So maybe on that May 1st date, we could look at that. We could talk about the goals again, maybe possibly if we think we need to tweak them or look at an additional goal potentially for next year. We could talk about it at that meeting. But it wouldn't be a final, you would not be receiving your final evaluation this May 1st. That would happen next, maybe around May 1st. If that makes sense.
And so in the meantime, between now and May 1st, we can, Jeff and I can get together with Dr. DeAndre.
Okay, yeah, maybe you guys can recommend the indicators to us. So I just wanted to inform the committee about that. Great. Any other school business?
Motion to adjourn?
Seen none? We have a motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.